Evening and welcome to the July 17th meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair Tom LaCusa and I will be confirming that all members in person who's anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Vini Hemaphathy?
I'm moving him in as panelist now.
Michael Verma.
Here.
Dan Zerko?
Here.
All right. And Vini?
We can, when he comes in, we can.
Oh, okay, all right. So we'll check back with the staff when I call your name. Please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
Okay. This is, this open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar is posted on the agenda in the town's website identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. Please note that some members are participating via Zoom webinar and all votes will be taken via roll call vote. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand and when we get to the comment section of the meeting, I'll call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelist unmute and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. I guess not. And now we will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Vini is here.
Vini is here, let's just, Vini, you want to confirm your presence? Can you unmute then? We put it in with thumbs up. We do the, what, pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good. We do have some announcements. First, the Safe Routes to School Project, the construction will be starting July 23rd, July of this year in the town. Safe Routes to School Project, the project is being funded and overseen by the Mass DOT. Encompasses Bliss Road from Blueberry Hill to the elementary school and Bliss Road from Loughlin Drive to just south of Bliss Court. This project includes sidewalk construction along the south side of Bliss Road, upgrades to the ADA Act of compliance installation of a rapid flashing beacon and a strip of crosswalks, bicycle accommodations along Blueberry Hill Road. The Long Meadow DPW will continue to coordinate with Mass DOT during construction and a project timeline will be updated at our website, longmeadowma.gov accordingly. We also have a first responder night with the Long Meadow Police Department hosting a first responder night event on Tuesday, August 15th with a rain date of August 16th and it'll be at Williams Middle School and please visit our website, longmeadowma.gov for more information about the event as it becomes available. And do we, we don't have a time on what time to start yet?
At this time, we're going to update that one posting as soon as we find out.
Okay, all right. All right, next on the agenda, we have resident comments. Is there anyone in the audience want to speak on resident comments tonight? Do we have anybody online?
We don't see anyone online.
Okay, good. We will move then to board interviews, but we do have a, we're going to have a public hearing, it's close for 7:30. Then you can track it out. Okay, so our board committee interviews, I'll begin with the order listed on the memo and is Michael Zeller here? You want to move up? We, we don't have a microphone, Michael.
Oh, yeah, it's picked up.
Oh, we're all picked up for that.
LaCusa's speaking.
Okay, Michael, you are looking for a reappointment to the Board of Assessors?
Correct.
You must have thick skin.
I take this thing to now, it's pretty big.
So could you just introduce yourself and give us your background?
I'm Michael Zeller, I'm reporting to Don't Come Strive, I've been a resident here for 28 years now and I've been on the board for the last 14 years.
All right, and is there anything special that you want to come back for? I mean, is it something about being on that board?
I guess until someone wants to replace me.
Oh, okay.
Actually, I'm, you know, I believe it's a civic, you know, duty for everybody to be a part of the process and that's what I'm doing.
Great. Any questions for Mark?
Mr. Zeller, thank you for reapplying and I know you've been on the board for a while. You know, as you know, because you've been here before, one of my issues is, is commercial property valuation and I'd just like to get your take on how that, how you understand that's done and whether there can be anything done to alleviate what seems to me to be this continuity between the rate at which commercial property values are going up and residential property values are going down.
You know, I'm not an assessor, but we do with, with the DOR rules and regulations how to appraise and how to assess things rather. And so, you know, limited I can do to, first of all, if the statistics are, is that we're one of the lowest commercials percentage wise in the town, in the city, towns of Massachusetts. We believe it's under 5% and, you know, I don't, I'm not trying to be political, I may be political in that regard, but, because it's really up to you guys to make that decision, not mine. But it weighs heavily on commercial at this point. I wish we could create more commercial in this area to maybe alleviate some of that. In reference to, you're talking about the valuations and so forth. You know, I can only tell you that you'd have to speak to those in the, the assessor themselves or even the ones we hired up to see how far we can go out to make those judgments and valuations. I think that's what they're referring to is the valuations of the property. Because you feel that the property values of commercial are low relative to the area. I can't make that sacred because, you know, again, we have, you know, the DOR gives us certain criteria that we can only go with. Subjectively, we make other choices other than what the DOR recommends to get the valuation.
Yeah, I guess I, I didn't really get, make my questions clear as it could have been. I, I think is the, you know, I, I see the Board of Assessors, maybe this is where I don't understand the role of the Board of Assessors, is to review, comment and be the voice to the community to both our principal assessor as well as to our consultants. And, you know, I just, I guess I'm wondering, do you also see that as your role and if so, are, do you believe that that's a valid request for that to be your role? Again, my, my concern is that over the last 14 years that I've been on this board, the rate of increase of value of residential properties has gone up at twice the rate of increase of value of commercial properties. Not, I'm not saying that, you know, we need more commercial property, you know, we are where we are. It's the rate of change of the valuation.
I understand.
And, and should the Board of Assessors take on the role of the community in dealing with, you know, I don't talk to our principal assessor, I don't talk to KTA or whoever, I think that's the role of the Board of Assessors. And so I'm always saying, you know, should, is that something you, you and the other couple of people should be doing?
Well, in reference to that, in the past, we have looked to see what could be done in reference to how far we look in a circumference of outside of Long Meadow to get the valuations of making comparison of commercial listing. Again, we're hampered by what is the DOR allows us to do, right? We're not able to say, okay, let's see what Emerson is, see what the valuation of Emerson try and, we can't do that. My, my personal feeling is that because we have such a low commercial, that the penalty of commercial would be extreme compared to how much you would save if there was a split rate to the residential. And, you know, how much, how much will that affect commercial in reference to profitability and so forth?
Yeah, but I'm not talking about a split rate, that's a whole different subject because I understand the split rate is problematic when you're 5% commercial. I'm talking about the base value of commercial property.
And as I said to you before, I can't go back.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like you know your job, you've explained yourself very well, so thank you. And the good news is that our commercial properties are pretty much full and operating, you know, whereas in some towns they're not. So, thank you, we'll, we'll be making decisions and let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Capital Planning Committee, we have some three-year terms. Is John Stipek here? Either the person on the line?
I see Steven Metz is in.
Steven Metz is here, okay. Mr. Metz?
I'm going to move him in as panelist.
Okay. Steven Metz, you're looking for a three-year term?
Now can you see me?
All right, so if you just state your, your name, your address and your interest in the capital planning.
My name is Steven Metz, 171 Coventry Lane. I've been chair of the committee for, I think, at least three terms. My interest in this is always, has always been to try to maximize the use of the capital funds to, for the benefit of the community, trying to take into account the state requirements, the quality of the requests being made and, and things will make life easier for the people who work here, always subject to, my major belief is that my committee acts as a subcommittee of the Board of Assessors in order that I can transmit your thoughts and desires and to the people who are making the request for purchases.
Thanks, Steven. So in your experience on the Capital Planning Committee, is there any specific decisions that came off out of your committee that you say, boy, I was really glad that I was able to vote on that?
Well, I have to tell you that our recommendations are what we wanted to come up with, so I'm very happy with in general what we have managed to do, which is optimize the funds we have available to meet the requests of the town managers, board and citizens.
Any other questions for Mr. Metz? Yes, Marco.
Dr. Metz, now that you've gotten a few terms under your belt, what, what would you reckon, you know, since we're, one of the things we'd like to do is potentially look at the process, what do you think should happen differently, especially relative to the Capital Planning Committee, Community Preservation Committee and anybody else who has their hands into capital improvements?
Well, I think, and I have mentioned to this before, I think that it would be useful to have a meeting of a representative of the Select Board, my committee, the Finance Committee and the Community Preservation Committee and whoever else might be appropriate to make a little bit better long-range plan for this community, given what we know are going to be the limitations of resources and what we can see coming down the pike is what the community is going to need. That would be my thing I'd really like to see come along.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, if there's no other questions. Mr. Metz, or Dr. Metz will let you know in future meetings we're making, we're making the vote, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and no, John Stipek, who has reappointment, okay. Community Preservation Commission, William Harbison, reappointment? William Harbison?
I don't believe they were confirmed, but it's okay, we can move on.
Okay. Council Aging Board of Directors, Donna Leganza?
Thank you.
Oh, Donna, come up, up here. If you could just start with, just give your name and your address and then, I know you had some stuff in your application, but if you could just say something about why you'd like to be on the Board of Aging.
My name is Donna Leganza, I'm at 162 Greenacre Avenue, Long Meadow, Mass. I would like to be on the Board of Directors for the Council on Aging to try to do some good, try to make the place better, people happy, elderly people happier, and I've been a very brief way.
Good, and, and you know a few people on the board?
I do, yes.
Oh, beautiful. So you have that relationship to get you going and?
Yes.
All right, is, have you been on any of the boards in town?
No.
Okay.
Never.
Well, thanks for stepping forward. Any questions from all of you on the committee?
Mr. Lepisa, thank you for, for applying.
You're welcome.
My, my biggest question is, what do you, what would you see as your role on this COA board and do you have something you'd like to see get done that is maybe missing? Not that you need to do that, but just kind of curious.
Well, my role, I really don't know. I suppose there would be various open positions and, I don't know, I heard the secretary was leaving, I don't know what that would be, but as far as what I could accomplish, it depends on what is presented, I guess, really. But as I go to programs in the center here and talk to people, there's always a complaint or some problem or something that I feel I can bring up if I were on the board and have it looked at, analyzed, maybe solved, hopefully. And I think what they did, they did a wonderful job, the board did, as far as the wheelchair thing, wheelchairs and all of that, that were previously at the old senior center we had at Stockham, you know, wheelchairs and walkers and whatnot at the, at the ready for people that needed them and here we didn't have that, they didn't come over. And so the board has arranged a new kind of a workaround where if people need, if someone needs a wheelchair, they can report this and the veterans, a veteran will volunteer to go to the, I think it's the Jewish center to pick it up and then deliver it to the person's home. I thought that was a wonderful thing, they finally got that straightened around because people have been complaining about that for at least a couple of years since the, the new place here has been built.
Thank you.
So that was a good thing.
All right, yeah, that's definitely a, a big issue because so many times people might need a wheelchair or walker just for a week, week and a half, you know, and a place to learn and from is, is a big loss.
Right. I know years ago, my mom needed, I think it was a walker and the nurse at the time actually brought it right over to her at the house, so it was very nice, very good service. So this is almost the same thing.
Right, that's good. Yeah, I have a, actually an affordable toilet, you know, that you could sit on, you know, in my truck in my car, remember? I wish I could just drop it off here and leave it. My wife said she knows where to take it.
I think except for JCC.
Yeah, it's the Jewish nursing home, I believe.
They have a locker there that we have our things all, you know, there, so probably that's where, where it would be.
Okay, well, thank you for coming and we'll, we're making a decision in one of the future meetings, we'll let you know.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay. Okay, and Tree Committee, William Seefield?
Yes.
Please join us up here and what's there with your, your name and your address and?
I'm Dr. William Seefield, I'm over in 97th Front, Manhattan.
Okay, and what's your interest in trees?
Well, I'm a good friend of David Marinelli, who's been on the Tree Committee and actually I've volunteered for a lot of projects in the, a lot of trees in town involved, one of the newer streets in town. And I think the town needs good stewardship when it comes to trees, both from a health point of view and from a global warming point of view, so I think that's something you can't neglect it. I think without a full-time tree warden, it's, it's not that easy and I think the, the town needs eyes and ears and I think more people who sort of have an interest in trees, I think the better.
Good, well, it's, it's, I think it's a great time to be on with you because we've just had the assessment done, we talked about it in our last meeting and we're going to try to figure out, there's a lot of work that needs to be done and, and so we're going to need a strong board to help us with it.
I think we can be the eyes and ears if the town at some point does get a full-time tree warden, which through the grapevine here is a good possibility. You know, he can't be everywhere, you're going to need a good board to help him.
Yes, great, thanks. Any other questions, Mark?
I guess I was just going to ask the same question I asked before, which is, you know, what, what do you see your role as a member of the Tree Committee to be? And, and secondly, are you coming in with, you know, a, a goal that you'd like to see us, see the town achieve?
Well, I think my, my goal would be that there are a number of trees that are diseased or need to be taken down and I think I would, would like to see more planting going as well. That's, that's, so I would like to be instrumental in doing both those things. And I think you end up being the eyes and the ears for the community at large and a tree ward is not going to be everywhere, so we can, we can help in those regards.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Just more of a comment, Dr. Seefield, I attend a lot of the, the committee meetings and offsites as well. You're always there, you know, adding value, so appreciate it.
Yes, it's been sort of fun to, David's let me sort of sneak in and kind of listen in and it's, so I know most of the members and it's, it's been worth one.
Thanks for stepping up, appreciate it.
Thank you, Seefield, you know, usually reading, everything. And then we have, we have a hearing in a few minutes, but maybe we did, maybe I'll quickly do the board and panel of the appointments, the nominations to appoint the Arts Committee. We have someone who would?
I'll make a motion to appoint Matt Showen to a three-year term on those, on the Audit Committee.
Okay, would you roll call vote? Are those in favor?
I don't think we need a roll call. Maybe we do it immediately.
Yeah, because Vini is there, we need roll call. Yeah, okay.
So, Mr. Lepisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Mr. Hemaphathy?
Yes.
Okay, we're looking for the Board of Health, we have three individuals.
I'll, I'll make a, a motion to appoint Michelle Keane, Elliot Green, Dr. Elliot Greenberg, Dr. Anastasios and Angelides to the, each to three-year term on the Board of Health expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Okay, okay, roll call vote?
Mr. Lepisa?
All those in favor, I should have said, all those in favor, yes.
I know, we have to do a roll call vote.
No, I know. Yes, all of them.
Mr. Lepisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Mr. Hemaphathy?
Yes.
And we have a member for the Building Committee?
I'll make a motion to appoint Tom Ewing to, reappoint Tom Ewing to a three-year term for the Building Committee expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Mr. Lepisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Mr. Hemaphathy?
Yes.
And now the Conservation Commission, two people here?
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint, reappoint Andrea Chason and David Dumas to the Conservation Commission committee for, for three-year terms expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Mr. Lepisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Mr. Hemaphathy?
Yes.
And the Council on Aging Board of Directors, we have five folks, six open seats.
Yeah, just before we do that, Tom, do we have any additional applications pending?
Just one.
Okay.
And there's eight, there are eight openings.
Yeah, oh, there's eight, okay.
Yeah, six.
Oh, let's see, there's six and two. Okay, good, so we have one more person on the line.
It's fine, I'll, I'll make a motion to reappoint Rose Mares, George Shea and Elizabeth Tyson and to appoint Patricia Self and Judith Gelong to the three-year terms on the Council on Aging Board of Directors expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Mr. Lepisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Mr. Hemaphathy?
Yes.
And two folks for the Cultural Council?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint, to reappoint Catherine Begonagood and appoint Stephanie, I'll meet, 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 excuse me, to the three-year terms on the Cultural Council expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Mr. Lepisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Mr. Hemaphathy?
Yes.
And three folks for the Energy and Sustainability Committee? A motion?
I'm going to make a motion to appoint Elizabeth Bone and Andrea Chason to reappoint them to the Energy and Sustainability Committee, just to get those out of the way and then I'll make some comments and do.
Two, two three-year terms?
To, to the three-year terms expiring June 30th, 2026, thank you.
Okay, you're the second for?
Second.
Okay, we'll just have, Voight then?
Mr. Lepisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Mr. Hemaphathy?
Yes.
Tom, can I, I'd just like to make a comment, we have somebody else who applied for the Energy and Sustainability Committee and based on what we've seen with potential conflicts of interest, even though he said there is no conflict of interest, I think his role on, just to make it, you know, right, you know, an activist group relative to environmental and energy issues, I have a concern, if somebody else wants to go forward with it, you know, you might guess, but I have a concern pointing somebody who might potentially be in, be in that position. I don't want to put him in the position nor do I want to put the town in the position and that's the reason I did what I did.
Okay.
So, so there still is a, there is a seat available, right?
Yes.
One vacant seat.
So I'll make the motion to appoint Gary Levine to the Energy and Sustainability Committee for, the vacant seat, term expiring June 30th, 2025.
You're the second on the motion?
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? I would say that, I know there's other folks on the committee who may be part of that group also, so, but we don't have a problem with it. All those in favor?
Mr. Lepisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
No.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Mr. Hemaphathy?
Yes.
Okay, we have time for the last one, Parks and Recreation, we have two folks, your motion to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reappoint Jeff Rantoul and Gerald Duquette to the Parks and Recreation Committee for three-year terms, expiring June 30th.
Second.
Second, okay, all those in favor?
Mr. Lepisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Mr. Hemaphathy?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to open a public hearing for the alcohol liquor license application?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing, open to the alcohol license.
Second.
Okay. Okay, the roll call vote, all those in favor?
Mr. Lepisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Mr. Hemaphathy?
Yes.
Okay, the area is now open and an application for alcohol, alcohol liquor license made by Restaurant Group Aluva LLC, Rolos Tacos, Tequila and Oysters to be located Bliss Road. You folks want to step forward at the table here? You folks want to step forward at the table here? And please state your name, those of you who are going to be speaking.
Attorney Jennifer Shadler.
Okay.
This is.
Ralph Santanilla, Michael Party Owners.
All right, great, and so what do you, what are you, what are you going to say about your application?
Well, they're here for a liquor license at that location at, at the Long Meadow Shops, 732 Bliss Road. There was a previous restaurant there, they're looking to open up a new one under that main Rolos Tacos, Tequilas and Oysters. They, both Michael and Ralph, being the members of the LLC Restaurant Group Aluva LLC, both own and operate very successful establishments, restaurants in the Massachusetts Long Meadow area. And as far as their reputation, it's been, from what I understand, impeccable, no issues with serving alcohol. So that's why they're like to ask this board to approve their liquor license.
Okay, well, yeah, we've had a previous liquor license at that location before and, you know, the town just wants, the main thing with liquor license, we want to make sure that you're not going to serve underage people, you're not going to serve folks who are already inebriated. Just our role as elected officials is to protect citizens from those kinds of hazards related to alcohol and so we want to make sure that you've met all the requirements, tips, certification and so forth. And I assume everything is in order.
Nice.
Okay, any questions from board members or?
I'm just, I'm really excited for, for you guys and appreciate you picking Long Meadow and I said to myself, a few months ago, I said, I wish there was a taco. So you definitely heard me, but I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's great. All right, I, you know, I think the application was pretty straightforward, yes.
Yeah, I didn't have any questions, but I think you've both been before, before.
Yes, sir.
You're going to get the same comments from me that you got the last time for the attorney, maybe it's the first time we do this, but we take liquor licenses seriously, as our chairman indicated, we take liquor license violations seriously. You're within spitting distance of our high school and we don't ever want to see you back here. And I guarantee you that the police will be doing compliance checks. And since you essentially do business in town, I think you're aware of that, but I think it's my obligation to kind of remind you of that and wish you the best of luck and like I said, hope to never see you again.
I appreciate that, thank you, yeah.
Okay, there's no further comments or questions?
I'll move, we close the hearing.
Okay, you have a second or?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor closing the hearing?
Mr. Lepisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zorka?
Yes.
Mr. Hermaphy?
Yes.
All right, so we're going to point out that the Section 8 Finance Disclosure Form on file with the Subfloor Office was not included in the posted application packet, is that?
Yeah, it's a pretty large document with a big one, that time scan, so it's available for you.
So it is on file, okay. But it wasn't in our application, oh, because it's so big.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's, okay, so is there any other discussion on the?
I'll make a motion that we give a full liquor license as requested to the Restaurant Group Aluva LLC, as requested.
Second, okay.
And then just?
Any other discussion?
Yeah, sorry, just one, one point, just to add to that, because of the location, just after doing 16-seat binding, just like we did for the liquor license that came last week, that has no detrimental impact to any schools sitting under church within 500 feet. I'll just add that to the motion.
Yes, what's going on before, okay, so that's the only thing that we've talked about in the past. All right, so I guess we can call the vote, all those in favor?
Mr. Lepisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zorka?
Yes.
Mr. Hermaphy?
Yes.
All right, well, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Great, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a petition at ATM Verizon, we're going to be able to appeal some other business before that. And the next thing would be select board comments, if we have any more call.
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments, I attended a couple of meetings and I think it's important to report on both to the select board and to the people at, at home, that one of the meetings was with the Recycling Committee and there's a, there's a concern and, and maybe you can take this back to Jim Layden, that, that there's no recycling at the Council on Aging facility, you're shaking your head, so you probably heard this already, and they're, they're looking to have something put in here and that, I think that sounds like we can take care of that pretty regularly. The other thing is that there's been a, I don't know if it's a formal complaint, but it's been noted to the Recycling Committee that businesses are not recycling and there's an obligation that they do so as part of both our bylaws, but also I think within state laws and so I, my understanding is that, that is another thing that falls to the Board of Health to enforce because there's nobody else and so I just wanted to make a comment about that. So the other thing is that I attended the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's NPO Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting and as I've been reporting in the past, schedules are slipping and so the, the current schedule for the update of the north end of Route 5, which is the Converse Street project, is to advertise it in January of 2025, so it's 18 months from now. And then, you know, construction is probably, you pick it, you know, six months or eight months, so it's the summer or something of 2025, so and, and the south end of Route 5, there's at least a year behind that, maybe even more as things slip and I'll continue to keep a pull-up to date, but it's pretty, pretty interesting because what they're doing is they've got a fixed dollar amount and as things move, you know, escalate in costs, they move projects out because they, they've got to try to fit all their projects within, within their current budget. So that's the current status of the Long Meadow project at Route 5 and Converse Street, so it's 2025 advertisement to construction, some of that later that year. Another thing is the Scannick Valley, you know, health consortium is doing quite well relative to what's going on, they, they're making some minor changes to their offerings, I don't think it affects many, if any, of the employees in, in the town of Long Meadow, they're trying to make things more effective and efficient and in terms of managing our costs, the more I participate in that, the more I understand how good a job Scannick Valley is doing controlling costs and how fortunate we are to be using Scannick Valley instead of somebody like GICC or somebody else who really has a very, very good practice and system of, of managing healthcare costs. Our healthcare costs have been going up at a very, very modest rate relative to the rest of the world and they continue to be very much on top of these things as they look at every year, they look at their offerings and what they should no longer offer because people aren't accepting it and things that they should, so I just wanted to let people know that they're doing a great job, that's it.
Great, thank you. Any other subfloor comments? Yes, Vini?
Hi everyone, sorry about all the technology issues, I could hear everything, I'm sorry you guys couldn't see me or hear me for portions of it, but I just had a few comments I wanted to make. Since the last meeting, we had another meeting of the Capital Planning Program Working Group and we had asked, you know, our consultants over at Beta to take a look at other towns with a similar population, similar budget and see what they had done in terms of, you know, making their infrastructure climate resilient. And basically what they came back and told us was that no other towns, you know, our size with our budget has, has tried to tackle this issue yet. So, you know, I, I mentioned that because I want to, you know, give kudos to Len and Corinne and the rest of our staff for kind of being at the forefront of this and, you know, trying to tackle this very, very big, big problem. You know, I think that myself and, you know, I think most of the town, you know, appreciates it when our, you know, when our government's thinking ahead and trying to get in front of things, so, so yeah, just wanted to give praise to, to Len and Corinne and the rest of the staff. The second thing I wanted to mention was, you know, a few weeks, a few months ago, we talked about a grant that we had applied for that would basically embed a mental health clinician with our police to help respond to 911 calls that most likely had a mental health issue. I don't know if, you know, the rest of you all saw this, but in the news a couple of weeks ago, there was an article about West Springfield, they had done something similar and had, had started a mental health clinician on staff back in November. And since then, they've seen a 20% decrease in repeat 911 calls. And so it's good to have some local data that's, you know, backs up the research and, you know, the priority of, you know, why we wanted to, to apply for the grant as well. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was that I, I had a chance to attend the MMA's meeting for newly elected select board members. So it was a great meeting, there's tons of folks, it was good to, you know, talk to other folks that had just been elected. And, you know, I, I found it kind of funny that no matter who I talked to from whatever corner of Massachusetts, when I told them I was from Long Meadow, that they wanted to mention how much they loved their town green and how beautiful it was. So, you know, there's, there's much worse things a town can be known for, so it's, it's good that, you know, we're known for that and, and it's, it's nice that people have, you know, that, that perception of Long Meadow, so those are, those are my comments.
That sounds great, good, any other subfloor comments? All right, so then we can move into the Town Management Report for June, well, this is June 5th, is that?
July 17.
Oh, there's July 17, there it is. They threw it, it was just, okay, so Len?
Thank you, so tonight I just have a quarterly legal expense update as we close out FY '23. You can see on the chart here where we landed with things, we did have some accounts that we were able to encumber the funds for to roll into FY '24, we had some matters that were still lingering, so we will be paying those out with FY '23 funds as we receive those invoices. But we're, we're pretty on par with where we thought we would be. And then an update on the Tree Committee, I did want to call special attention to a notable retirement from the Tree Committee. At the end of June 2023, Dave Marinelli concluded his appointment on the Tree Committee and while all volunteers and members of boards and committees are incredibly valued, Dave's role has truly been unique. As most people know, he served as the part-time tree warden for the town for years and was responsible for setting up, populating and maintaining the GIS tree inventory that we still use today. Most know Dave for his tireless work on the Tree Committee, planting trees, providing tree cyclings during Arbor Day and offering education on the importance of our public shade tree canopy. I just want to thank Dave profoundly for all his work he's done in this area.
Great, thanks.
So I have her reports, please.
Any questions for Len?
Yes, I have, I've just got a few questions, Len, about the monthly reports. First one is that, that noted from the DPW's report that there's going to be some work done on landscaping or revising the landscaping of the high school and I, I know there's a, I've heard from some people who say there's an interest by people in town about that, whether it's the Long Meadow gardeners or whatever, and I just am hoping we don't get a, you know, take some action that people in town rise up against because they didn't like what we did. I don't know if there's going to be a process for reviewing what the plan is before action just takes place, but I think, you know, I know that a lot of effort, because I was on the committee, the Building Committee, a lot of effort went into developing the, the, the trees and the plantings around the high school and a lot of it's almost unsustainable, which is part of the issue, but there's a lot of money spent on it, I think I'd like to see it, see that reviewed if you, if you don't mind. The other thing is the, I, I noted that the DPW, they, they're putting in a water tank, a mixer in the water tank, is that, how, how are we paying for that, you know, where do the funds come from?
The, what you noted in there is not the actual work to do it, it's the design plans.
Okay, so, okay, because at some point, it's going to, I was going to say, it's going to be pretty expensive, I think, to do that.
Yes.
Okay, so at some point, but I thi, I think it's worth people noting because we've all gotten comments about the water notifications that the town is working on, agitation of the water, which, you know, in the water tank, which we led to believe is going to be very, very helpful. While we're on water, I, this was the, this June had the final purchased levels, quantities of water and I, I have to note that, that, you know, we buy water in, in millions of gallons and we sell it in hundreds of cubic feet, but luckily I have a calculator that does the conversion and we're, we're buying 22% more than we're selling. So that is a concern to me and ought to be a concern to other people, we're, we, we sell about 820,000 hundred cubic feet and we buy 985,000 hundred cubic feet. Somewhere, you know, I mean, I understand a water mean, you know, main flushing, hydrant flushing, firefighting isn't metered water, but I think the, you know, the expected number is something like, you know, 5% give or take, and we're 22%. That translates to an added cost of about 40 cents a unit and that's, you know, 10% of the cost of $307.6 a unit and so there, I, I don't know what the priorities are for the DPW and the Water Department, Len, but that, that 900, actually I think it comes out to 738 million gallons, 738 million gallons that we bought there for the year. As you're looking at that, that's 986,000 hundred cubic feet and we've got to do something because it's just too high a number and that's, you know, I, I hope that spurs somebody to action because it, it's, you know, a big, big discrepancy. The, also sticking with the DPW monthly report, I still like, they, they have a great Gantt chart on projects, but I'm not quite sure what the color code is because there's no, no guide to it, I think you said that the last time, you can just feed that back to Sean, maybe we can understand what the red and blue lines mean. And finally, the Parks and Rec Department monthly report noted that they were using a revolving fund for projects and I think the number was 271,800 dollars, including money to buy a DPW mower, $21,800. I'm just wondering if there's, if there's a process by which we should do, be doing that, I know DPW mowers generally go through a capital planning process, I don't know where else the Parks and Rec revolving fund money went for, but when it's being used for projects, should there not be a, a different process other than, you know, it's, it's a decision by the director of the Parks and Rec Fund and I, I'm sure that you're involved, but, but it just.
That mower, that was a fraction of them, the mower was.
Oh, yeah.
Plus $60,000.
Right, right.
It was in the capital plan, but it came up short and so the revolving fund helped buffer that and it's a mower for Wolf Swamp Field.
Oh, I, I understand that, I'm just saying, saying that, you know, generally the Capital Planning Committee, and I know Dr. Metz, you know, was here, but we say, we're going to pay for it X percent or X dollars out of this one, Y dollars out of this one, Z dollars out of that one. And, and I, I'm just surprised that we're using Parks and Rec revolving fund for, for projects and it, it seems fairly significant. And the last comment that I would just have is that it was very good to note in the Building Department that the code enforcement, it, it continues to be extraordinarily effective. You know, I think that speaks volumes about the people who are doing it and might also speak a little bit about what wasn't getting done in the past without the resources we have, but I think it's important because for the most part, what it said is that people are responding positively to the enforcement as well, that's my list.
Okay, is that it, Len?
That's it.
Thanks, yes.
Thank you. So I def, I definitely agree with Mark with some of the points you were making there, I had made a couple of notes here when I, over the weekend, one of them, I, I just had a question for you, Len, maybe you know, but on the stump grinding, are we prioritizing the location of where the stumps are being ground down first or how, how are we going about that? You know, like where we pave roads, we have a, a process in place, I, I just, I'm unfamiliar with the process, I guess.
Sure, I can look in here and get back to you, I don't know, the answer off the top of my head.
And then the other one was, Mark mentioned the, the landscaping, so I just know that that's, that's something where it's like Wolf Swamp Field, it's visible, you drive by it and you see it, so I definitely want, would like to also see the, the plans for that, I think it'd be helpful to get.
that. I think it'd be helpful to get an understanding of what we're, what we're doing there. I don't, I'm not really familiar with the project, but that would be helpful. And then the last comment I had for the DPW reports would be, we talked so much about trees. And I'm just wondering if we could, in our report, you know, talk about how many trees we planted, how many trees we were hazardous, that we deemed hazardous, that we, how many trees we took down, that we removed. I just think that would be helpful for the board to see in a monthly report.
Yep, absolutely. And we'll be able to do that as soon as we have a full time tree warden. It'll be part of their duties to make a monthly report like that.
Is that what they were doing when we had? I don't recall.
No.
I've never had.
No, we've never had a full time. It's been a stipend position. And then in terms of the high school landscaping, this is, it's not a plan to add landscaping. It's a plan to clean up what's there and minimize the amount of beds that are needed to be maintained. They have not been being maintained. I think we've all noticed that as driven by over the years. And some of the plantings have reached the end of their mature life. Some of them were ornamental and were put in and had a ten to twelve year lifespan. And they have reached that lifespan now and need to be removed. So this hundred thousand dollars that was in the FY twenty four budget that was called out as a budget highlight is both for the high school landscaping and for the landscaping of this facility. That amount of money will not go very far. So it, it is to clean up what's there and to minimize the number of beds that are needed to be reeded by hand.
And then finally, just really, I appreciate the fact that we're getting some new containers for recycling and then trash. Well, I know I've been kind of a stickler to you, Lynn, and, and, you know, your team, trying to make sure we get, that we make these purchases and get them out there. So I appreciate your help.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Any other questions about the report? Okay. I have a couple of things. One is, you know, you mentioned the, our legal expenses and you mentioned a law from Prince Lobel. And, and included with our documents is a letter dated July seventh to the Secretary of Energy Environmental Affairs regarding the Western Mass Gas Reliability Project. And in this letter, they talk quite a bit about, like, Ellen, what they refer as, let's see, LNG. It's basically, you know, LNG in putting gas, taking gas from a pipeline and putting it into tanks and transporting. Right. That's what they're talking about. This is a policy that hasn't been voted on by the board. And so I'm kind of surprised to see a letter going out, you know, from our town that promotes this idea that rather than have a pipeline, we could have tanks of gas driving through our town to go to other places. This was an issue that came up maybe my second year on the board, third year on the board. And they had talked about having tanks loaded with gas, liquid gas, going through town on an hourly basis, twenty four hours a day, from the East Long Meadow, you know, pipeline, you know, station there. And we were clear that this was not a good idea. And now to see this in this letter, I think it's important that these kinds of decisions, that the board, board, boards, the board votes are raised. Because, you know, we, our job is to come up with policies and letters like this should reflect the policy of the select board, because that's our role. You know, we represent the, the town members. And, and so I, I wasn't happy to see this letter. Mark, you know, Tom?
Yeah, Tom, I, I read the same letter you did. I saw this as, you know, Prince Lobel and the attorney's recommendation or suggestion of if there were an emergency and the pipeline were broken, you could temporarily truck in LNG rather than have to spend this, all this money and put in a secondary pipeline. I saw the recommendation as a temporary critical, you know, backup as opposed to, you know, we're recommending maybe.
I've seen it several times.
Okay.
I've never agreed with them.
Right. I hear you. I'm just saying.
Because once they start doing it, there's no reason they could ever have to stop. And they could just transport wherever they want from here. I mean, the Tennessee Pipeline could transfer it up to Vermont, which is what they originally had planned, you know, with the East Long Meadow line. So, you know, I guess that was, so I don't know when, if, you know, if this is something that, you know, we, if there's going to be additional letters like this going on, I, I think that the vote, you know, the board needs to determine if this is a policy we all agree on. I, I just, that's what I believe, you know.
I believe this letter was discussed in your executive session, I think on the twenty sixth.
Yeah.
And I don't, and I was not at that executive session. So I don't know if you went into that level of detail.
We didn't go that level of detail, but it was discussed and essentially agreed.
Yeah, it was discussed. We didn't go that level of detail.
So it's definitely something to put a pin in and remember for the next executive session and, and or further discussion on this to make sure you express those thoughts and potentially take a vote to let Attorney Canoff know that, that you don't want references to that in there. But I, I do think in reading it, it is to rebut some of the arguments that ever so it's made, that this was the only way that they could do the reliability project.
Right. Yeah. So, but I, you know, at the beginning, and I think because some of the board members, you know, haven't, weren't here when, when we faced that situation with the twenty four hour trucking sort of option that they were going to use for moving gas through our town. So, thank you, Lynn. The other thing is, you know, in terms of the, the report that, that talked about code enforcement, you know, I did talk to Wes who was surprised that they had to deal with some violation. And, and I suggest that they find out if someone reported it. Because like, you know, when we originally approved these positions, we made it clear that, you know, if there's something reported, that they would act on. My understanding is they were not supposed to just go around and just look for violations because people in neighborhoods have a different tolerance for, for things. And so, you know, I, so I, I mean, I asked the person to, to find out if, if someone had complained, if there's a root of complaint. Because I think there's a big difference between having, you know, two people who are, you know, driving around just looking for problems in the town to be bored, or people who are responding to people who report problems in the town. And, and what I voted for was people who would respond to complaints. And if, if they're getting something different, I'm not, you know, that's, I'm not happy. And, you know, I just think that, you know, there's so many ways to go wrong in a town like this. You could hang towels over your porch and there's something to be, you know, if they're driving by, hey, they can't dry those towels out there. If you have a pool, you're in trouble. So, so I just hope that they're sticking with the original intention.
Yeah, I'm just going to express an alternate view, Tom. And that is, we have bylaws and I'm not, I'm not convinced or, or satisfied that we tell our town employees, you get to choose which bylaws get enforced and which bylaws don't get enforced. If there's, if, if the bylaws are a bad bylaw, and I don't care if it's parking overnight or commercial trucks and whatever, it's a bad bylaw, let's change the bylaw. But if there's a law, how can we, you know, I mean, as far as I know, the only people who have discretion is when a police officer stops you for going too fast, they can give you a warning or give you a ticket. But for the most part, our, our bylaw, our zoning bylaws are bylaws. You're either in violation of them or you're not. And if somebody says, you know, well, why are you enforcing it now when you weren't before? It's because we didn't have the resources to do that. But, you know, I think we need to do that. Now, you know, I, I respect your position. I'm just saying that, you know, in my opinion, if we say to these folks, you know, you can do, what we're going to get is calls and say, well, they can do it on that street. How come they can't do it on, I can't do it on my streets? It's only because my neighbors don't like it? Well, that's, that can't be. You can't violate the bylaws or you can violate the bylaws. And we've got a system. It's a law, it's a law. And, and I, I think it's very difficult if we ask Brittany and John, who are code enforcement officers, to, to use your discretion. I think you've got to say, here's the bylaws. You know, I'm fine with saying to them, you know, warn people, educate people, don't, you know, issue them a ticket the very first time they do something wrong. But I also think that, that they don't get the discretion, in my opinion. That's just my opinion.
Well, that's your opinion.
Right.
So just to clarify, they, they do a little of both. The bulk of their work is complete driven. But if they do see something that is a violation of the bylaw, they will stop and put someone unnoticed. They will educate them, give them the opportunity, you know, and eventually follow backup. But a lot of the complaints that led to putting forward the addition of the code enforcement officers were that we couldn't even keep up with responding to the complaints, never mind doing proactive education. And now we are able to do that. So you've seen, and I think you saw it in the monthly report, that they've been really successful with the signs. We had lawn signs that would show up everywhere all the time. And they will proactively take those if they're placed in violation of a bylaw, or they will approach a homeowner and have them move it back to where it needs to go.
Well, that, that just, that interpretation sounds different than what I've heard. That's all I'm saying. Any other comments on the report? Okay, we are supposed to start a, a hearing, eight P M. for petition for Verizon job. And do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Okay. We'll call it, those in favor?
Mr. Kisa?
Yes.
Mr. Bowe?
Yes.
Mr. Smerko?
Yes.
Mr. Malaput?
Yes.
Okay. So this is public hearing is for three locations, including Benedict Terrace, Laurel Street, and Converse Street. Is there a representative of Verizon attendance to speak to these? Yeah, please step up to the table and talk a little bit about the petitions. We all received information with some drawings and so forth. So what are these really, why we need these?
Okay. Don Varner, representing Verizon. The three polls are, one's on Converse Street, one's on Laurel Street, and one's on Benedict Terrace. They're all within a couple hundred yards of each other. The reason these are being requested is because there's a Mastox project, number six oh eight eight one, if that means, to you guys. It's about widening Laurel Street. And these poles need to be either moved, and it looks like two instances that are being relocated, and one is being placed, just so that the widening can happen. And this is requested as part of that project that was kind of Mastox.
I'm just gonna, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Varner. Did anybody else on the select board know of this widening, this Mastox project? Why, I read this and said, when are we widening Laurel Street?
Yeah, I didn't know.
And, you know, and Lynn, do you know that we're widening Laurel Street or?
Uh, no.
So that, that's what, clearly, you've got to widen the street, you've got to move the poles. But we don't, I don't understand why we're moving the poles when we don't have any clue about this project.
That's a little disconcerting to me.
Yeah, I know. And it's waiting on your, your, your level of authority, I guess, but.
I am one of the last phases of this project when it happened. And I was out there today. I was taking measurements, making sure that where they sprayed the pole, that everything was looking good and everything looked as you got out of the mass. And I saw markings all over the place, along primarily, it was, no, no, it was along Congress and Laurel where they met. And it looks like somebody's been out there doing all sorts of measurements, probably the Mastox team. I, I apologize if they didn't let you know, but I, I can't be in.
No, it's not your, your responsibility. I, I just had no clue this was coming down the, down the pipe.
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm with you, Mark. I saw people out there, like activity, but, and I drove by just to, because I saw it on the agenda, of course, but I didn't see any.
And now I'm, I represent Long Meadow on the MPO, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's, you know, planning board group that looks at highway systems. And I don't even see this project anywhere on their system, which generally reports on Mastox projects. So it's, it's clearly, it's not your, your responsibility. But Lynn, I'm just wondering how this is happening without anybody in our town knowing about it, even if it's a state.
Heard of a Mastox project there. It could be part of the L project, but that's a town initiated one, so.
And, and that's the one that's not coming down till twenty twenty five.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it here. It's, it's listed on the state website.
Mr. Varner, what, what was the Mastox number again?
It's six zero eight 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 one. So I've been told.
We'll all be looking that up in the next couple of days, but.
Yeah, I think it's very hard for us to, to really take a vote on something we don't even know is happening, who's doing it, if it's appropriate time to do this. I know, did you, they must have given you a start date for this project?
No.
No, okay.
No, because that's, really, the widening piece is not our jurisdiction. Our jurisdiction is to get the poles out of the way so that they can do their work. And we were told about this, I don't know when, I was the one that prepared these documents for you. It was only about maybe a couple of months ago, max, when I got this information. And I did my job, got it done, and, boy.
Yeah, it's the standard format.
Yeah, but usually, like I said, this comes after or while that project is well into its phases.
Yeah. And, and those poles are, you know, they're carrying lines. And the, the number of wires they carry or where they carry it from and to us, is that going to change?
No, no, it's, one pole's only moving twenty two feet. And it's just moving away from the street so that when they do their work, it's all, it's out of the way. And another pole is moving eight feet and, and back a little bit. And they're putting a hand pole in right next to it. So it's actually getting further up the street as well and to the backside of the sidewalk.
Okay.
The other one looks like it's just a new placement, but it's off the sidewalk on the other side of the street, presumably because they're going to need that room once they widen it out to take it over, to take.
So it's a new placement, but there, there, it's going to be, there's no change in like, the, the wires attached to it are just going to be brought in or moved out.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's, there's no, no difference to anything what's being carried because there's already fiber on those lines from what I have seen.
All right. So we have a little bit of a dilemma here that these are standard kinds of requests. And, you know, that they know this construction is coming and they want to move the poles. But it's unusual that we're not as familiar. And Mark, can you do something?
Lynn, Lynn, go ahead.
It's the L project.
So is the L project.
It's the exact, it's the exact project Mark was speaking about in the comments. It's, the project includes intersection improvements at the intersections of Converse Street and Laurel Street, Converse and Long Meadow, and Long Meadow Street at Forest Land and Western Drive. Improvements include new and improved turn lanes, traffic signal reconstruction. Work will also consist of improved bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, new signage and pavement markings with construction tentative for spring of twenty twenty five.
Okay. Any other additional questions?
So, so if this were approved tonight, when do you see Verizon doing this work?
Moving the poles?
Yeah.
It can take from two weeks to several months.
Apparently, you've got eighteen months to do it.
I guess they get plenty of time. It sounds that way.
Better than the work already getting done.
That's what I was.
With a pole down in the middle, pole fall down in the middle of the street?
Yeah.
I, I, there are no, there are no new guidelines, guide wires, or you're just moving poles. That's right. That's the way I read this. You're right, Tom. It's a kind of a standard request.
Well, I, I, one, one pole does have a new guy wire going in. That's the one on Laurel, Converse. That one has a, that one's going to need a, a new structure at the back of it. I don't know how long it's going to be, it doesn't say. But that's the one that's moving twenty two feet up the intersection.
So the. So the, and that will have, so it's relocated away from Laurel Street and Converse Street, and that'll just have that, with that X is, that's like a, a support?
Yeah, that's a, that's a guy wire, a expansion.
Okay, all right.
Are, are property owners generally notified by Verizon when this is done?
They should have been notified about the plan, and they should have been notified about this meeting, yeah.
Okay.
And any of them should be invited to talk at this too, if they have this.
Any other questions for a Verizon representative? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
In second?
Second.
Second, okay. We'll call a vote in favor.
We have to close the hearing first. Is it a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing, yeah, and those who are in favor.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mrs. Rurko?
Yes.
Mr. Ammappati?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Verizon poll petitions under four A zero L H four P.
Second.
Second, okay.
Recognizing you got eighteen months to do your job.
If I'm in trouble.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, recall for the motion, those in favor?
Mr. Pisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mrs. Rurko?
Yes.
Mr. Ammappati?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so we've covered a lot of ground here. We are into our own minutes. We have a motion to approve meeting minutes of May fifteen. A motion?
I'll move approve minutes of May fifteen.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, move, move, move.
Mr. Pisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mrs. Rurko?
Yes.
Mr. Ammappati?
Yes.
Okay, great, and now the, we have a letter talking about becoming a sister city of Taikoawa in Hokkaido, Japan, and we have a letter from the mayor, Konichi, Konichi Meida, who would welcome this partnership and says one greetings. Is there any other, we had Assistant Principal Paul Dockley came and spoke to us about this and how he saw this a positive move for the town and for the students and schools who were interacting with the students from Japan. So if there's any, if there's any further discussion, we could look for a motion to.
Yeah, I just have some discussion. One of the things that I'm trying to pull up the letter, one of the things that the letter said, and I think it was, it's a great letter, and I totally support this program, is that, you know, he looks forward to greater interchanges between Kakikawa and, and Long Meadow, but also spoke about putting together, I think his exact words were somehow funding, creating a fund that would help with travel and supporting travel. And one of the things that, you know, obviously, the, you know, it's probably small money, but nevertheless, it's something that we should be concerned about. And I was wondering if there was any opportunity for the LEAF program at the high school to be requested to, to be part of this, should we choose to make this, this funding take place? You know, I, I know that it was a, you know, it, it, it's probably something that, that should happen, but I don't know that, that the municipality is the right group to be funding travel between high school students and, you know, students in, in Japan.
Yes, I don't, just for those listening, we do not have a fund for international travel for people from the town, never has been one, not planning on having one, but the LEAFs, yeah, that's great, you know, if people could apply to a grant if there's students involved, educational, that would be good. But if, if anyone listening, you're listening audience, would like to donate money to an international travel fund, we will use it appropriately. But it's a good point, Mark. Any other comments or questions on this? Okay, again, you know, I know that, I knew about this program back in the nineties when I was involved in the city of Springfield. I had a student who was very involved with it, and I know they, they did a great job, and they, they were teaching some Japanese lessons in local schools in Springfield for students, and so there could be some weight up to these, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the, the partnership. As a sister city. And Mark was making that motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor would roll call for.
Mr. Pisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mrs. Rurko?
Yes.
Mr. Ammappati?
Yes.
Okay, so, Tom, as part of the motion, somehow, I think, you know, I'd like to direct our town manager to respond to this letter. I mean, I think it's a town official to town official kind of thing, just saying the select board, you know, whatever one's got it right, but select board acted positively, responded positively, we look forward to exchanges and all that kind. I think, you know, I, I think it deserves some kind of formal response, and I think as part of our vote, we ought to direct that response.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, he, he wrote a letter to our town manager, and so, yeah, you know, town manager responded, or we could have an additional, that's worth discussing, should we have a, you know, just an additional letter from the select board, where we all say, saying, you know, we go to the sand, we're looking forward to seeing you in the fall, he's planning to come.
And I think Lynn can probably state that in her letter, yeah.
Okay, all right, then.
So.
If you could do that, then, thank you.
I know, I don't know anything you need to do, but.
And now we move to the goal setting, town manager, goal setting list that she'd sent us, Lynn, do you have something that you want to say about what you've sent us?
Well, it's been on here for a few meetings now. I do think it warrants an in-depth conversation. I don't know if you want to do that now, I'm happy to, or if you'd like to set up time at a different meeting to do that. The way we've structured this in the past has been, these are not just my goals, they're goals that represent myself, the select board, and town departments. And I just went through and put a draft priority ranking on these, but I, but that's obviously can change based on conversations we have, but also needs to be able to change based on whatever happens, you know, day to day in the office.
Okay, well, any response to Lynn's questions about, we want to set up meeting, you know, future meeting and sense of priority for these goals, or?
I was just gonna say, I, I know Josh wasn't able to make it tonight, but I think it's important to have everybody present while, while we're going through these goals.
Okay.
That's just, I mean, that's just my, my opinion, I think, but it's also something I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road on either, because, you know, we only, we only meet so often.
Right, so, is there any direction you would need between, like, if we, you know, we would have a meeting for like a month or so, right?
On the seventh.
I think on the seventh.
The seventh, okay, so.
I guess the biggest thing that I'm looking for from you is if you look through this list, are there things that stick out to you that, one, are ones you don't think we should be putting any time into, or, two, you think are the top priority? That will help me plan workout for the rest of the year, and also structure select board meetings too with updates on projects.
Tom, if I could address that, there's nothing on here that I would drop. You know, I have personal biases, I think that some things like, you know, converting all the rest of the lights to the L Ds ought to be fairly easy to do, and it has a good financial return to the town, but I'd like to see that moved up in, in, in its priority. You know, clearly, things like list pool are already top priority, but we get a lot of comments and, and questions about, about that, and I want to make sure that that is moving along with, with whatever speed we can, can move it along with.
All right, so, so, yeah, so people from the board would send information, you know, an email to Lynn if you, if there's anything special that you want priorities, and then we, or, or drop possibly, and then we could discuss it at our next meeting when we have, hopefully, have it to the board. That sounds good? Yes, we need.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, I mean, I, you know, I saw something agenda, and I wasn't exactly sure, you know, what, what we were discussing with it, so, but, but I agree that we need to, we need to talk about this soon, it's important, so I think, yeah, if we can put this on the agenda for the next meeting, and we all come, you know, prepared to talk about priorities and, and all that, that, that would be good.
All right, good, so, Mark.
Yeah, the, the only other thing that concerns me, and I don't have the list or a list at all, but, you know, one of the things that we've always run into is, do we have a, a, some way of reducing our, controlling our, our year-over-year costs? Budgeting is always an issue to us, and, and I, you know, I, I picked out the streetlight conversion, there's not that much, many left, and frankly, it doesn't, is not going to have a significant dollar impact on us, but it'd be very nice if we had things that did have a dollar impact on, for the town. For example, you know, a discussion about, do we implement a town wireless Wi-Fi system that would bring, is a revenue, potential revenue source to the town, is something that I'd like to see included and discussed because it's a long-term project, you know, I mean, a lot of these things are, are great, but, but we really need to get a good handle on the cost of the town and find new revenue streams before we start running out of, of tax revenue base. And so something like, you know, town-wide Wi-Fi or wireless or something that, you know, brings income back to the town, not only service, is something that I'd like to see us consider also, and consider it a higher, higher priority. And, and, and it's not just that, I think, you know, we ought to go back to all the town department heads, all the people and say, you know, what can we do to raise more money to find alternate revenue sources?
Okay, all right.
I mean, we are going to be talking about that today as well, with town Wi-Fi. But yeah, I mean, I think last meeting, a lot of us spoke in favor of, of, you know, broadband municipal light, whatever you want to, I guess, call it, but, but I think a lot of us spoke in favor of that for a goal as well, so I'm glad that's on the agenda tonight, and, and, you know, another item that we keep hearing about is, is water as well, and the, the quality of water, and I, I just don't want to, I don't want to ignore the fact that there are issues with, with the water, and I'm, I'm not going to be silent about it, and we keep talking about it until we address it, and we need to, we need someone to come in front of the board, or we need to, whether we have a consultant or a DPW, we need, this is a really important issue for our town. I think that needs to be a goal, I mean, ultimately, improvements are going to be determined or lack thereof by the town in front of town meeting, but I think the, the debate is worthy, I think we need to talk about it because you go down the street and someone is constantly asking you about water. So it's, it's a real concern, I think that's something that we should be talking about instead of ignoring it, so.
Yeah, well, we did have someone come quite a while ago, who was really, just, they described exactly the, the changes to the water purification that's going to be happening to the system in Springfield, that's going to then come to us, and so, you know, perhaps that would be, it's time for them to come back and talk about that maintenance overhaul and for the water system in Springfield.
Yeah, so there's a couple pieces happening there. One is the Springfield Water Sewer Commission doing the upgrades of their plant, that's one presentation. The other is DPW is engaged with a consulting firm, and they're, they're doing exactly what you're speaking about, Dan, it started quite a while ago, the report's about to wrap up, and they're scheduled to present to you in the fall. But what you've seen in the DPW report regarding the mixer, that is stuff that came out of a prior report, that was done right during the height of the pandemic. And then with the changes in the new director, we now have a company that's here doing a comprehensive water asset management plan for us. So that will come to you, I said, in the fall.
But that's asset management, and is that, I think the answer here is.
It's capital, it's a capital plan.
Okay, but it's also.
Water sewer and.
My concern is water quality, and, and, you know, the question is, should we, can we even, but should we, we can, invest money to improve the, address the water quality issues that come into our town, the water we purchase from Springfield, knowing that we're going to, if we invest that money, two years after we invest the money, City of Springfield's also investing money that makes our investment unnecessary, and I'm not even sure we can make our investment in a, in a timely manner, you know? And oh, by the way, don't kid yourselves, we're going to be paying for Springfield's investment as well, so we're going to be paying for the repair, for the, the improvements twice, and so.
They've already started charging us.
Well, we're not, you know, and, and I think much of the issue is, you know, immediate remedies that we can deal with, but there's also an education thing, I mean, I, you know, I know that there, there have been group discussions that friends of mine have been at, and they walk out of them, and there are discussions in this building, in the adult center, they say, oh my God, people in this, in this building are telling us, don't drink the water. And if, if that's the message that's going out of the community buildings, you know, then we've got to address that as opposed to saying, you know, if you drink the water, here's what you need to understand, then it's not, you know, whatever it is, it, you know, we may be better off educating people in the short term than making a major capital investment, and I don't know if it's a major capital investment or a minor capital investment in terms of the water quality, in terms of the water distribution and the second tank and all that stuff, that's totally different from the water quality. I just fear we're going to spend an awful lot of money, make improvements, and six months later, we're going to get charged again for the same thing by the City of Springfield, and then our, our improvements are going to be unnecessary.
And do we have?
Well, you're right, yeah, it shouldn't downplay the quality of water.
On the, the improvements to the water source from Springfield when they're doing five years?
That's what they're saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd have to refresh my memory on that. I know there's different phases of work happening, different pieces of the plant coming online at different times.
Okay, all right, so we'll talk about it when we talk about the goals, and we'll continue that discussion, and then we can move on to the new business, which is the DPW budget. We received a nice letter from Paul Pesterzic.
So if I, if you could, if I don't mean to interrupt you, finance committee is scheduled to meet at nine o'clock tonight, so if you would entertain it, I would ask that you take this item last, to allow the finance committee.
Oh, to just.
To hold their meeting, and then Paul Pesterzic will be here.
Oh, oh, okay, all right, yes, that's, that's. If we're still here.
Yeah, if you're done by nine, then I can address it, Ben, I did want to hear what finance said.
All right, good. So we have a Parks and Recreation Commission have a question, you know, or basically the, the chair, Andrew Burke, is presented to speak. Is he here?
Yes.
Please step up, Andrew, and talk about your, your feelings, you know, what, you know, what the plans are for a memorial for Peter Landon and his, his role, which you felt was significant to help the Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, so Andrew Burke, King thirty-two Wilson Drive. And I guess I'll start by saying, there are a lot of reasons that one might want to memorialize Pete Landon in town, he has been, or was a part of many boards, commissions, and sort of like citizen groups, he was sort of the model for kind of exemplar of citizen work. And we sort of think that one of the, well, I'm going to advocate for one of them without saying the others are not as good, it's not a true beside, but he has been a longtime sort of citizen advocate for recreation in town, whether that was for youth or for adults generically, so he was involved in this building, he was heavily involved from the citizen side with Will Swann Fields, in particular, worrying about updates to the building and making sure there was a flagpole installed, and a number of other kind of lighting and other issues. And he regularly came, whether he had something to say at all, to park board meetings, and so. Regularly came, whether he had something to say at all to park board meetings. And so it felt appropriate to us to. Suggest a way to honor him, um, in his untimely demise would be to have a memorial at the fields. So the flagpole is now installed next to the building and. We would advocate for putting something very similar to the boulder slash plaque that's at the track. That just acknowledges his, um, activism, I guess, in town in terms of. Advocating for youth and adult recreation. And we'd put it right there with the pole that he had been talking about for years.
That's good.
Yeah. And we have money for it actually. When he died, um, a lot of friends of Pete Landon started a, uh, a special fund. And it has about fifty-four hundred dollars in it now.
Okay. Well, that's good news. Um, so this, um, this plaque is. If Lynn, have you seen any drafts or what it would look like or?
Uh, no, but it's fairly consistent. It sounds to be fairly consistent with what we have in some other places.
Be consistent with everything else. Okay. So there's no, you don't have to worry about that. No, it would be consistent and, uh.
No disco balls, nothing.
That's good.
Yeah, I think the, the only thing that concerned me is the, the letter said a small plaque, but it didn't define with small as in small to something.
Yeah. So this is why, like, reference it to the one at the track. Like, it's like a, like a, you know, boulder with a plaque on the face.
Okay. All right. Good. So it sounds consistent. Any other questions or comments on?
Great, great idea. Appreciate you bringing it in front of us and, um, yeah, I'm sure we probably all, um. Heard from Pete Landon at some point for some, some improvements or some issue. Um, but yeah, I mean, he. He's just someone that, you know, he puts so much time and effort. Um, he also served our country too. Um, so no, it's really, uh. You know, I wish he was still, uh, with us today. Um, you know, he'd reach out to me and I'm like, why are, why are you contacting me on the weekend? You, you should be, you're at the Cape right now. And you're, you know, and he's talking about, uh, the fields and this improvement and what's going on with this project. I'm like, I just got on the board. I, you know, I. I'll find out, but I'll get back to you. But no, really a great guy and appreciate you, uh, bringing this in front of us.
Um, Tom, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the, the proposal with the memorial plaque that Pete Landon proposed by the. Parks and Rec Committee subject to the normal town manager's acceptance program for, for all donations. That way. Then gets to look at it, sign off.
Okay. I actually went to second that. Um, as long as it, it doesn't say, it doesn't say he's an activist, does it? No, no, no. Okay. Cause he was a little conservative. I don't know how he would feel. Well, he called him activist, but he did activate a lot of good things, as we show.
Right, right.
So, um, we do roll call both for those in favor.
Mr. Kisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Sorko?
Yes.
Mr. Hermaphy?
Yes.
All right, Andrew, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for.
Thank you.
And now we move to, um. Street closure application, uh, the emerging legion, uh, for the fall festival. We have a closure request with boost of Matt. We did get something else today. E-mail.
Um, I'll just lay you in ahead. Mr. Godfrey here as well for, for the.
Oh, okay.
Middle post seventy-five. Um, and just to give you a heads up, if you do approve, make any approved, excuse me. Did you go to approve today? Just maybe contingent upon, um, the police department approval. It's in front of them. There should be.
Okay, all right. So, uh, you know, hopefully most of us have been to the fall festival. And we've had a couple of years now, which is replacing the, uh, spring festival. And it's set for the town green September ninth and tenth, from ten AM to five PM. And, um, we're, oh, Godfrey is here. Um, if you have anything to say about the application.
What can I tell you? I started my sleeve this night already.
Okay. Yes, well, um.
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the street closure of the Long Meadow Street Extension or whatever it's called, subject to police. Review and comments.
Second, okay. Uh, any further discussion? Here we are. Those in favor, roll call.
Mr. Kisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Sorko?
Yes.
Mr. Hermaphy?
Yes.
All right. I look forward to being there. And of course, it's pending approval from the police department, they know the draw to. All right, great. And then, uh, we have one day liquor application, uh, for LA CCF. For, we have a, um, swings, a summer soiree. Kind of gathering and for a, um, uh, an art show. There is a second one. And, um. Do we have, does someone, someone want to make a motion for these or it's for, um? The first one is for the summer soiree, which is on eight twenty-four, twenty-three from five to seven PM. In the Long Meadow.
So I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, grant the one day, uh, liquor license to the Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund. Uh, on August tenth, twenty twenty-three, the art show from five to seven PM.
Okay, so we have.
Also.
So two motions, it was for the twenty-fourth and the two, two is one motion.
That was just one motion.
Okay, one motion for the art show.
And I'll make, yeah, I'll make another motion that we accept one day liquor license, uh, for the Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund. On August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three for the summer soiree, five to seven PM.
Okay, do we have seconds for the motion?
I second.
We need second the motions. Okay. Um, any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess. Clearly the, the LA CCF has come before us every month for two liquor licenses for this building. For the last. Twenty-four months, something like that. And I, you know, I, I'm probably vote for it, but. I still remain concerned about potential liability of the town and how, how this is perceived as a town sponsored. Function as opposed to an outside organization using, using the building and, and leasing it out. And, you know. I, I continue to hear issues at an occasional meeting of somebody who. Probably shouldn't have been drinking or had too much to drink or whatever it is, or maybe they weren't driving. I don't, I don't know what the answer is here, but we now have a new town council and I, I feel a whole lot better. Maybe when I. Talk to you offline about this, about getting some kind of comment from our town council on what we need to do to. To make sure that we insulate the town from any potential liability from events at a town. At a town facility where liquor is being served, especially when it's perceived, potentially perceived, I shouldn't say it's. It's potentially perceived as the, as, as the event being a town supported, if not sponsored, organization.
Okay. You know, I know that they are tip certified and I don't know if we can do much more than that.
I, I'll just respond that there had been a policy that no liquor was served in town, town buildings because of that. And we've gone away from it for a lot of reasons, and I'm not arguing whether we should or shouldn't. But if we have attorneys who come back and tell us, you know, you can be certified all you want to, but if somebody leaving here gets into a car accident. That gets hit by a car or something like that, the town can potentially be liable. Now I understand, anybody can sue anybody over anything. But if, you know, if it looks like a duck and walks like a duck and talks like a duck and your lawyers say it's a duck. I'd like to hear that from our attorneys. Otherwise, I'm good with doing it and I'm going to vote for it again. I just want to get a, a reconfirmation that. The town can, can insulate itself and maybe we just have to put down on the invitation. This is not a town spot, whatever they tell us to do, we should do, that's all.
What was the previous, um, well, Dory Wallace, what were they suggesting?
That we don't do it at all.
That we don't do it at all now.
When was that?
Eight or ten years ago. I mean, I, I can find that.
Eight or ten years. Well, yeah, I'll hear your thoughts.
You know, but again, Dan, it was, anybody can sue anybody over anything at any time. I mean, I, you get that. The question is, you know, when, when is an event truly an outside event by somebody who's renting your facility? And when is it a, a, a town sponsored event? And this potentially falls into a gray area because LA CCF is, is, though, is supportive of, of the adult center. Folks and I think we talked about it six or eight months ago, saying the staff can't work on this stuff. To try to separate that and I believe they're not working on, on these anymore, which is going a long way. I'm, I'm not looking to stop it. I just want to insulate the town against potential liability. That's all.
Okay, so loaded. Um, the only thing I noticed on the, the eight twenty-four application. It says type of liquor. It doesn't have an X in beer and wine. Um, so I assume that that's what it's for.
Uh, I think I had the, I think I had Mary Beth who submitted. I think I had her submit another application after catching that, but that may have, it's, it's beer, beer and wine.
You see, I was missing.
Yeah, yeah.
X. So, yeah, as long as we approve them, but they, it, it's a beer and wine function. They never do anything else besides that. Um, okay. So, uh, if there's no further discussion on, on the vote, um. Roll call vote, all those in favor.
Mr. Kisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Sorko?
Yes.
Mr. Hermaphy? Mr. Hermaphy?
Yes.
And now we continue to, um, municipal fiber and cable advisory discussion. And who's going to be giving us them? Are you?
No, I, I actually, I was, I mean, I was, quite frankly, I was surprised that it made the agenda. This was. I'm happy that it made the agenda. Don't get me wrong. I just, I just appeared and looked at it and it was on the agenda.
Um, I, I don't have a lot of, other than we got, I think even the last meeting, somebody came here, a citizen came, her comment was. We need to get another cable company in the town. And I think it's important for residents in town to understand. That the cable lines that go under the, through the streets, a hundred miles of cables in Long Meadow do not belong to the town of Long Meadow. They belong to Comcast. And so, you know, we give Comcast a.
So why are we discussing this? We know this.
Well, because there are people at home who obviously don't know it because, because somebody came in here and said, we ought to get another cable company in town. The answer is. In order to do that, somebody is going to have to make a many, many millions of dollars investment to put their own cable system in town. So, you know.
So what do we have, do we say about municipal fiber?
So, so this was on the look ahead, uh, from the goals from last year or, or just made its way to the look ahead. And part of the discussion, the reason why it said municipal fiber and cable advisory is because we have. Technically a cable advisory committee that we are receiving advocates for, where there's. There's a question of whether or not that committee needs to be reformed into something else or in ten years from now, when they're renegotiating another contract. You know, there's just some questions on some direction we want to take in that regard as well. And then I'll let Lynn speak to municipal fiber.
Yeah, I think previously the, this, under a different select board, this issue came up and you tasked the cable advisory board with. Reviewing this and issuing your report. They did that. It didn't really move this project along any further. And, um, it's a little bit out of the, uh, the mission of the cable advisory board is six now. Um, so you, while it could be part of their mission, it, it's not really. Um, so you, you're kind of at a somewhat of a crossroads, but it is, it is one of the goals. And we can talk about how we move that goal forward.
Right. Because cable advisory is really about cable and we get, uh. Money from the cable companies to run our local TV station and so forth. And if we were looking at a wireless system, it really should be separate committee. I mean, I mean, I don't know how you manage those.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the cable advisory committee, it, it's very archaic in terms of. The, the labeling of that committee. I think, you know, twenty twenty-three, we should be looking at more of telecommunications. I think in East Long Meadow, they recently passed, um, at a recent election, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was the municipal light. Um, within the town, um, but. They also had a, they had a committee for broadband, I believe. I don't know if it's a sitting committee or if it was just temporary.
Special task.
Special task force.
It was a fiber to the home project.
Right.
But I, I lost track of what happened.
Right. And their goal, if they had a certain percentage of, um. Uh, residents that were taking part, it wouldn't be a burden on the taxpayers per se because it'd be paid for in a. An enterprise fund that would be revolving. Um, so. I like the idea of that. Um, I think that we just, we need to start the conversation and. Have people involved, whether it's a, a committee, um, that we're talking about. I personally think that committee should be. Renamed because it should be including, uh, other projects just outside of cable itself. But I think when COVID hit, a lot of people, you know, left the cities, moved to towns and a lot of people worked from home. They, they take their. Boston or New York salary and, and are living, uh, in, in this area because they want to live in, in town. So, I mean, there's a lot of benefits to taking a look at this and I, I think we need to just start the conversation. So. I was glad to see this on the agenda. I just didn't, there wasn't like a memo or anything, um, below it. So I, I didn't know. Uh, is this just, we're going to start talking about, you know, this issue or how did it?
I don't know how this came to be on the agenda. It might've been something that, um, was discussed with Josh. I'm not sure. Um, but I don't, I don't know.
Is it active nature?
Uh, but it is a goal. It is a select board, um, town manager goal. I think it's listed under there as wifi, townwide wifi. There's a lot of different options that can be explored. A lot of communities have already explored this. There's a lot of people out there that can provide guidance to us on this. Um, and if you, if you want, I can. Get some of that information for you from those companies and ask them to, you know, put, pitch us something. And we can evaluate it from there and you guys could decide what direction to go unless you feel strongly about a task force or. You know, citizen group leading the charge.
Let's see what Vinnie has to say.
Well, yeah, I, I think I brought this up last meeting when we talked about, um, our goals, uh, how I want to make sure that we were. Looking at potentially getting fiber. Um, and, and Lynn, um. It, you know, we have an IT study, um, as part of, I think, uh, you know, poss, a use of our ARPA funds. Um, so would that IT study be an avenue? Like, I mean, I assume that's like hiring consultants or hiring consultants to kind of look at different options? Would we be able to look at fiber options through that?
Uh, so I think I might be confusing what you're saying. We have an IT study that's happening right now. It's more of an organizational study. That's about to be finished. We do have ARPA funding for IT needs and you absolutely could use that funding to fund a study.
Okay.
Bring that back to you and you would need to amend the, you know, the ARPA plan to say we're using, we're using the funding for this.
Okay. Um, I, I think that, okay, so I guess that's an option. I think that, uh, but like you said too, if, if. Might, it's probably going to be obviously cheaper, uh, if you're able to maybe reach out to different municipalities around us. Um. And, um, you know, maybe we can start the process there, uh, before we decide to possibly use, uh, ARPA funds. But, uh, I mean, I think, you know, for all the reasons, you know, Dan mentioned, um. I, I think that this is, this should be a priority. I think pretty soon, uh, people are going to, uh, consider, you know, fiber as. A, you know, part of infrastructure that they, um, that they expect to have. Um, and I think that, you know. We're, we're, this is just going to keep accelerating. In January, we're going to have, you know, Lego relocating, uh, to the Boston area. There are a lot of Lego employees here, uh, in Long Meadow and, you know, those folks, some of them are going to be. Are going to work hybrid and they'll need, you know, accessible, fast, you know, reliable internet. Uh, some of them are going to. Leave Lego, uh, and they'll probably be taking on new jobs. There are going to be remote jobs. Um, and then, um. So, uh, or if they decide to, to move and relocate to the Boston area, folks that are moving into those, probably going to be working remotely most likely just because of the demographics. Um, of our town. So, yeah, I, I think that this, you know, is definitely a big priority, uh, for us. Um, but, you know, in terms of. How we want to start that process, um. And it, it makes sense to, to municipalities, uh, around us to, to kind of get an idea and maybe get started. That way. And then maybe we can, after that, think about if we want to, you know, hot, you know, use ARPA funds or something else to go more in depth.
Right. And, and I think we do have some folks in the community that would step up. Right, and I think we do have some folks in the community that would step up if we had a preliminary sort of a pilot group that just looked a little further into it and then determine what kind of presentations the select board is going to need. So that's, that sounds, that's something that's a good thing to do.
Yeah, sorry, the point that I was making before is a little direction on the, because we're going through boarding committee applicants and processes, and I mentioned before that we do have people applying to the now vacant cable advisory committee. So as I was talking with Josh before his chairship ended, we discussed bringing this to the board to have everyone also discuss about what, some direction on what you'd like me to do when somebody applies to the cable advisory committee? And are we going forward with interviewing with that committee or what should you?
Well, these committees are standard from town to town, isn't it?
Sometimes yes, sometimes no. If you don't have a cable advisory board, it defaults to the issuing authority. And in your case, it's also like.
But, but they generally just address issues of cable and negotiating cable contracts and so forth.
And then annually, they're supposed to hold a public hearing.
Yeah, well, I mean, at this point, I'll see how we can merge something into, something that has such a specific role and it's, you know, supported by cable to make decisions about cable. And wifi would be in competition with cable. So that, I mean, I don't see how we can do that at this point. Mark?
And Tom, I agree with you. I think cable advisory committee is the cable advisory committee. And based on getting things moving and recognizing that Lynn's got a lot on her plate, but also hearing, I think, these people who previously came to talk about the cable advisory committee and other people expressing interest, I think an appropriate method would be a town manager task force. It gives the flexibility that we want, but yet gets the involvement of people who frankly know a whole lot more about these systems than any of us seem to know. And I think you're right, Tom, there are people in town who can step up and we advertise for a town manager's task force to come up with recommendations on providing, you know, improved internet conduct, internet connectivity to town residents. That is a big enough, you know, opportunity that might include wireless, it might include fiber to the home, it might, you know, include whatever people think is appropriate. But there's some real smart people out there, and then that allows them to move forward then whether you can do it personally or not, because we've got some people working on it. And in fact, if we did this, I'd not only want to create this task force, but I'd want to set them a deadline of like the end of the year or something like that, to come back to the select board with a recommendation, something to kind of light a fire on it.
Yeah, if I'd want to, it would be a, you know, pilot task force and maybe we could even contact folks who have come to talk to us at public comment, you know, Mike had tracked on some, you know, maybe we had at least one joint at least. I don't know what other people will think about that kind of task force.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's a good idea. I think we have a lot of good, good people in town, really smart people in town that have quality backgrounds to help with this. I think the fact that we're talking about it today and really haven't talked too much about it in the past, I think it's, just shows that the town is moving in a, it's a progressive town, moving in a, in a direction to make positive change, where we've let a lot of things sit for many years and we haven't addressed them. And these are issues that are coming up and people, we need to, this board needs to act based on what the people in town actually want. And this is something that people want us to start talking about it and looking into. So I support a task force, certainly. I think we have a lot of qualified people. And the last thing that I would just say is, this is also a safety issue too. We've seen what happened at West Pool. I've personally helped organize cleanups down at the, down at Riverside with the sheriff department and tons of illegal dumping are taking place and we don't have cameras down there. You know, what happened at West Park, we didn't have cameras. What might happen at another park, who knows? We, we don't have the cameras available and it's, it's a safety issue. So there's just so many good reasons that we need to look into this. And it doesn't cost money to have a task force to help us come up with a plan. So I'm really proud to say that the board is moving in a direction that's, you know, addressing concerns that the residents have brought to us.
Okay, thanks. And, and just to defend prior words, we're not slouches. I mean, the thing that we've been waiting for is the tower. And now that the tower is up, and, you know, that kind of opened the doors for us. So we've been, it's, it's tough, but, you know, the tower's been up and I don't even know if it's fully operational yet. But, but that will give us the infrastructure to maybe move on. And so, yes, let's keep the ball moving forward. And Lynn, this might be something Corinne could deal with, because I know you've got a lot of stuff, so. Doesn't mean you have next, be right in there.
Yeah, and then do you want to take a vote tonight on a task force? Or do you want to have this on the next agenda, give it some thought? I mean, I'd like some direction on how many people you envision on this.
Okay, so we can talk about.
The next, the next meeting is August seventh.
Yeah.
This was also a carryover from Josh, I believe. I would, I would prefer to have Josh's input if possible, but I definitely think we need to move no later than the seventh of August.
Seventh it is. Keep the ball moving forward. Between then, maybe we should all take a hike up the top of the tower and make sure it's secure. I gotta go.
After, after you.
All right, so we have this, and then we have the liaison assignments, which we have. I don't know if anybody had any need to change any of their assigned places. We have a middle school building committee, which is new for twenty twenty-four, and that is, that's a, that's a big, that's a big one. I don't know who's, would be interested in that.
I think maybe the new person.
Yeah, I, I would be interested in that. And, and, you know, also, I think this is split amongst four members. And so, you know, now it's split amongst five. But I don't, you know, I don't know the exact process that you all, that, you know, that we go through to assign liaisons. But, but yeah, but middle school, I'm happy to take that one.
Take a lot, that's, that's like five of these other committees, maybe ten.
Watch what you ask for, you might just get it. It's, it's, it's a huge commitment and I'm not saying don't do it, because I'd love to have you do it. But it's a, it's a big time commitment and somebody takes that on based on what went on at the high school, there's not a whole lot of time for a lot of other things once that project gets going. I, I also think that Tom is chairing, want to spend more time on some of the things with Lynn and Mike and may want to, it's up to you, but turn some of your things over to beneath as well. But, but that addresses the, the other issues. I'm, you know, I'm pretty ensconced in what I'm doing and comfortable with it. I don't know what Dan.
All right, well, that's, so we can discuss that and you can pick it over with the middle schools beneath and see. But that would be a big plus to have somebody, you know, because that's going to be a fair amount of time.
Yeah, no, no, I, you know, I, no, I appreciate you saying that, Mark. And, and I know it's a, it'll be a big commitment, but I think, you know, as a former middle school teacher, as, as, you know, as a parent with kids that will probably be going to this new middle school or, you know, whatever we decide to do, yeah, no, I think, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to take that assignment if I can.
All right, applaud your, your.
Put on your, put on your architects hat.
Just about to get busy.
All right, well, that is good. And now we could adjourn, but we have to hear about the, I don't think, Mark, oh, it's nine o'clock. We're going to have to rush Paul Posters again here.
So are we keeping this?
Well, yeah, so here's the thing with the liaison assignments. They're all, Josh isn't here, so it's kind of tough, we can't give you out any extra. But right now it's split amongst four members, like said, like beneath seven four, and it needs to be, should be split among five. So I don't know the process we want to take for handing over beneath the board so that you guys could.
I could probably give to him some more with Long Reim planning that on.
Okay.
Because right now I'm on eight.
So I think in the past, there was five members, each member had like five or six, or the chair had one less. It really just depends on how you want to structure it.
Some beat more than others too.
And it doesn't, with Josh not here, it doesn't have to be figured out right this second, we have time at the next meeting.
Okay.
What's the difference between, one says MSBA and the other says middle school building committee? Is MSBA now?
Select Board Association.
Oh, MSBA.
I felt, I felt the same thing. I had to ask.
Too many MSBAs.
Got it.
All right, so, yeah, I'll look at my list, you can look at yours and, and Mark, if we have other, other open seats, we can kind of, but I don't, that's, that's a big thing.
And I just had a question, so probably for Lynn, but with these, with these committees, we don't have the ability to affect a quorum or a vote on an issue in these committees? That's something that's come up just on the various committees that I've been on.
Yeah, you're a non-voting member, you're a non-voting, you're not even a member.
Right, okay, so that, because there've been instances, you know, where, well, if you show up, then you're going to be part of the quorum. And I said, I'm not a voting member though, so I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, that's, that's actually part of our open meeting law training that we're going to update most boarding committee members this fall to try to get some more sense behind them, along with that as well.
All right, thank you, I think there is a lot of confusion on that, so.
Okay, with that being said, Paul is.
He's not here, so I'm happy to start. This is probably the most important item tonight, because today is our very last day.
Last day to do this.
So Paul's memo did a really great job laying out the issue and how we got here and what the possible solution is. So as you see, the DPW budget is in deficit. It's specifically related to the streetlight account. And this is a project that we have been working on for about ten months or so. When we realized, when we were doing the solar working group work, we realized we had these net metering agreements that had never been reallocated to different accounts once we did the LED streetlight conversion. It ended up snowballing into a much bigger, more complicated fix that is still not fixed. We're getting closer, it was transitioned to the new town council today. There was a flurry of, I do expect that we will have a resolution very quickly to amend that final net metering agreement, which will then, actually, the latest version on the table is to allow us to cash out those credits. So we will not be buying them and applying them to an account anymore, we will be cashing them out. But we didn't, we weren't able to effectuate that before the end of the fiscal year. And as you see, we have a pretty significant deficit in the DPW streetlight account. So MGL forty-four thirty-three B allows you to transfer funds between the appropriations in the last two months of the fiscal year, fifteen days after the close of the, up to fifteen days after the close of the fiscal year, which because of the holidays leads us, I'm sorry, because of the weekends, leads us to today. So at the very end of the memo, you see where Paul is suggesting that the funds come from to make that DPW streetlight account whole. He was presenting this to finance committee tonight for a formal vote. He did have some individual conversations with them and they all felt very comfortable with this approach, but he was getting a formal vote from them tonight, they were meeting virtually at nine o'clock.
So, well, a couple of things. One is, does the, does the finance committee have veto power? Or there was just an advisory thing that Paul was informing them of what's going on? I mean, can they vote against it and stop this? I thought we had the authority to transfer the money.
If I remember correctly, he was originally approaching them because he wanted to use their, they have a twenty thousand dollar line item that can be used to offset things. And I thought that's why he was originally approaching them. I don't see that he's using that funding here, so I, I'm not entirely sure.
I mean, they ought to be informed and I think that's great, but I don't think it's a, I, I just don't know if it's a permission kind of thing or if it's just informing them of pure situations. The, the other more important question I have is that, you know, we get these monthly reports from Paul, which always show, show the, you know, budget year date versus the budget. And it, it appears from this memo that this, you know, this hundred thousand dollars snuck up on us, when in fact, I assume we were charging this against the line item that we had budgeted because we thought we had, you know, less expenses in the, in the, you know, streetlight account to be paid. And so I guess the question is, to me, what steps are we taking to make sure that we don't have other things potentially sneak, unless this is totally unforeseen? I'm, I'm just kind of looking back, I think we need to do it and we'll do it, I assume. But I just wanted to find out what the story was.
Yep, it's a little bit of both. We, so we knew that there was the issue with the net metering agreements and the scheduling. We've been trying to fix that, it was, the situation was going now. I will say that DPW, the director and the business manager have been putting Paul and I on notice for the past couple of months to say, we're not going to have enough money, we're going to run short in this line. With everything else closing out the fiscal year and our, our ability to move money around greatly restricted, we were also waiting to see how the rest of the DPW lines shook out. Because if they had a lot of funding left in all of their other accounts, we weren't going to need this extenuating, you know, memo and approval from you, because we can move within the functions. But when it became clear that they've done a really good job spending on their budget and getting stuff done, they came and said, we're going to need funding from other areas. So it's, it's really a run up to the end of the fiscal year, getting those last invoices in. I have also given a really hard directive to departments that I really don't want to see any more prior year bills that shouldn't be happening. It'll happen, you know, one or two, but the amount that we've been seeing over the past few years that I've been here, really, we need to tighten up that. So they've taken that to heart and they've been doing that. So I think it's, it's a lot of things that's just running up to the end of the fiscal year and not being able to transfer between, within the department function.
Is it also fair to say that making this transfer for the last fiscal year, the one that ended June thirtieth, will provide us benefits in the current fiscal year? Because essentially, most of that hundred thousand dollars is going to get reallocated to other accounts in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. I mean, this is, you know, it's, it's power purchase agreement or net metering credits that we're paying for, but aren't we getting those transferred to other accounts?
So it's true thing. Sure, and the account up right now allows us to set our tax rate in fall, so we'll have a budget that we can close out. And I think your, your question you were getting at was, we'll see cost savings once we fix these net metering agreements. That will be true, we, we will have, we'll be redistributing that scheduling. So the credits that we're buying are going to actual accounts that are, are using energy. The good thing is the streetlights are not using as much energy as they were.
That sounds good, we're actually, yeah, saving more than we anticipated. But, but I think people need to understand is that, that this will allow us, or I shouldn't say this, that, that the work you're doing with town council and the town council will allow us to allocate those net metering credits to accounts that actually need the credits.
Yes.
Which is what we haven't been able to do.
And because we've amassed such a huge credit balance, that's why we're working to cash out that other net metering agreement. So we'll actually see the real dollar.
And our ever-source bill is a big thing, our streetlight negative, our state's bill is a big thing.
So we need a motion to transfer funds and is there a specific motion that we should be using?
I don't believe there's a specific motion, because normally if there is, he puts it in here for you.
Right.
So I think you can just reference his memo as, as laid out in his memo and. reference chapter forty-four, section thirty-three B, subsection B.
So that would be good if we could get a motion for that.
I just have one one last question on this, Tom. So for the net metering, the the credits, so where can we apply the credits to though? Do we have, do we have like other options? Like, can we can we put this towards some, you know, something else? And I'm not suggesting we're going to put this to something else, but I'm just it'd be nice to know what our options are.
We've got, we've got more electrical bills than you can imagine, Dan, in terms of, we got bills, the schools have multiple bills, the streetlights themselves have like eight or ten different bills. We got all kinds of bills. The net metering credit agreement was specifically listed certain account numbers for ever-source. And those are the ones that we ended up putting in LEDs. And so what we're going to be doing, correct me if I'm wrong, is we can then apply after we make this change that that our town council is working on, we will apply these net metering credits to all these accounts that weren't using net metering credits but still have positive bills that we'll be able to spend. So it's still be used for electricity.
But can it be like, can we purchase something else outside of electricity? Could it be like some like infrastructure or?
Yes. So yes, to an extent. So the current credit balances we have, we're going to get really strategic about the accounts that we put them on. For example, if and when the office consolidation to Greenwood happens, we can, uh, move a lot of those credits to the Greenwood facility and potentially buy the mini splits that we need there using those credit dollars. Yeah, we can do any retrofits and
Yeah, like that, that's what I'm.
Draw it down off that credit balance. Absolutely.
That's great. And so there's going to be, yeah, okay, no, I'm just, I'm pretty interested in this, but, you know, we can, we can cut ahead.
Yes, comments are good to have. Uh, any other comments or questions? Okay, so we need a motion that's related to chapter forty-four, the transfer of funds, section forty, section thirty-three B, allows the town to transfer funds and, uh, would someone make a motion to support the memo by Paul Sturzak to have transferred the funds?
I'll I'll make that motion to allow the transfer of funds. I I just want to make sure I know when, because I'm trying to find and it doesn't say where the funds are coming from.
Very bottom of the memo. He doesn't give the account numbers, but he just gives you the description of the accounts.
The salaries, principal assessors and the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so that we we transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the finance director's salary, ten thousand dollars from the principal assessor's salary and sixty-five thousand dollars from liability insurance to the DPW for the payment of their, uh, streetlight bills.
Hundred thousand dollars. Okay, and we have second motion?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Uh, we'll call vote. All those in favor?
Mr. Pisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Sverko?
Yes.
Mr. Komathy?
Yes.
All right. And in closing, we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, are those in favor?
Mr. Pisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Sverko?
Yes.
Mr. Komathy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for watching us and we'll see you on the seventh.
Your your average time has now come down.